I think he's handsome anyway.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. For the record, it's December 1st, 2022. It's 6:30 PM. Counsel, when I call your name, please say here or present. Mayor Maxton?
Here.
Counsel member Stroop?
Here.
Elizondo?
Here.
Bliss?
Here.
Kerner?
Here.
Parker?
Here.
And Menchow?
Present.
With seven members of council present, a quorum is declared.
Thank you, Christina. Would everybody please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. As a reminder, we are live streaming tonight's meeting. If there's anybody that would like to speak as part of the council meeting tonight, I would ask that you please use the microphone. If you speak from your seats, then the individuals that are viewing us online won't be able to hear you speak, and so we'd ask that everybody use the microphone. When you do come up, if it's the first time you speak tonight, would you please give your name? And if you're from some agency or part of the city, please state what agency you're from. And if you're a resident speaking, please state if you're a Fair Oaks Ranch resident or not. And we had no one sign up for citizens to be heard. Is there anybody here tonight that did not get an opportunity to sign up for citizens to be heard that would like to speak? With that, we'll move on to our presentations. We have one presentation tonight, which is the recognition of our Employee of the Quarter recipient for quarter number four.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I am Joanna Merrill. I'm the Director of Human Resources and Communications here at the city. And so tonight, we are recognizing our Employee of the Quarter winner. Something I haven't really done in the past is kind of let everybody know what really constitutes for our Employee of the Quarter. So our Employee of the Quarter is nominated by our fellow coworkers. They are able to nominate an employee based on one of three different categories that we've assigned for them that shows this employee has gone above and beyond the normal scope of their duties for their position. So some of these areas for accomplishments that they can be nominated for is accomplishments or contributions that show just an area that they've done outstanding or above and beyond for that position. Outstanding customer service, in which maybe they contributed to an extremely positive work environment that quarter, or through their customer service, they were able to enhance the reputation of the city or even of their own department in some way or another. And then the last category that they could be selected for is achievements, that they've exhibited some type of innovation in their position, in their department, contributed to a goal that we've either set internally or that council has helped us set through strategic planning, or they've promoted cost efficiency, ways to improve in different areas through productivity and items such as that. So those are some of the background items and what our team looks at. These are the categories that they nominate each other on. And so this quarter is from July through September, actually, so it's July, August, and September. It's a three-month period. And our nominees for this quarter, we had Kelsey Delgado, who was our Environmental Program Manager. We had Julie Lovelace, our Accountant One, Eloy Contreras, our Maintenance Technician, Scott Huzenga, who is our Assistant City Manager, and I always say his last name wrong, so I apologize, Scott, and then Casey Parker, our Multimedia Communications Officer. So as you can see on the screen, Eloy Contreras, our Maintenance Technician, was elected by a peer group to be our Employee of the Quarter winner this go-around. Eloy is one of our newer employees and is fairly new to the public works field in general. He has never really worked in the public sector, and he actually had taken on a lot of responsibilities in learning new skills for the drainage projects that council has had us working on. And so what he did is he kind of stepped up in a leadership role where he took on just training himself, learning all these new skills. Sorry, I was trying to think of the word. But he's basically taught himself how to utilize new equipment, new tools, training processes. And he also shared a lot of these processes with the rest of the maintenance team, teaching them, growing them as a team, so that they could get and accomplish some of these projects that were assigned to them. He took the initiative, kind of all on his own, to learn those items. And specifically, he kind of stepped up in that role of really cleaning out those drainage ditches and moving those projects forward so that we could show the city that council and staff really heard those needs and desires and that we were working to take action on those. He was able to accomplish these with a lot of adversity. This team was short-staffed at some point. Again, this was a new service, so there was a lot of learning involved and a lot of new equipment that needed to be utilized and handled. And he really stepped up for his team to do all that. And doing all that in-house saves the city so much money so that we don't have to have vendors and contractors go out. So he really did step up and show his ability to adapt and face adversity, and that really is kind of a shining example of what it means to be an Employee of the Quarter. Unfortunately, he could not be here tonight, but we still want to give him recognition for the outstanding work that he's done over this last quarter and being nominated for our Employee of the Quarter winner for quarter four. Thank you.
He's not out checking drainage ditches right now since we finally got some rain. Thank you, Joanna. Tonight, we have two items on our consent agenda. The first is the approval of the November 17th, 2022 Regular City Council Meeting Minutes. And the second item is the approval of the Second Reading of an ordinance approving the First Amendment to the city's exclusive franchise agreement with Republic Services for the collection, hauling, and disposal of residential garbage and refuse waste in the city of Fair Oaks Ranch. Is there any council member that would like to remove any of these items from consent to consideration? With that, then, could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Ezli?
I second.
And Laura? That will vote on the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Then the consent agenda is approved. We have one item on consideration and discussion for tonight, and that is the consideration and the possible action on approving the First Reading of an ordinance regarding extending the retention period of audiovisual recordings of open meetings from 90 days to six years. And Christina, are you gonna start it on this one?
Yes, I'm trying to get it to the... Good evening. I'm Christina Pachocchio, the City Secretary, and I'm here with Brian Lejeune, who is our IT manager. Counsel may recall that last October, you approved an ordinance establishing the Texas State Library Archives Commission, otherwise known as TSLAX, standard local government schedules for our city records retention schedules. This was done for all of our city records, except council extended the retention period for three council-related record types: agendas, agenda packets, and recordings. TSLAX's minimal retention periods for agenda and agenda packets are two years. Council, in showing good faith and transparency, increased our retention period for 10 years for each of those items. We broke out the minutes of recording sessions for audio-only and audiovisual recordings. A little bit of background on that, the audio-only was the type of records that we used to keep when we were in the old City Hall. Council opted to extend their retention period from 90 days to six years. And as of note, we are no longer holding those types of records any longer. We had a new record type, which is audiovisual recordings, and they were established because of the new technology we were going to be using here in this building with the live streaming. At the time, the determination was made to how long to keep a record of this type. We didn't know how big the records were going to be, and council opted to just go with the minimal recording time and evaluate. The new live streaming technology went into effect in April of 2022, and it's been used primarily for live streaming the council meetings, but we also use it for recording the boards and commission meetings. We use them for eternal use only. They are not pushed out. We use them for minutes. The staff has since evaluated approximately six months of the data and determined that the city is using a combined total of 84 gigabytes approximately during that six-month timeframe. Brian's going to elaborate a little bit more on that.
Thank you, Christina. From our estimations, we have adequate storage to house the audiovisual recordings based upon whatever decisions made this evening. To ensure that the data is safe from natural disaster, we'll also be sending a secure -- or we'll be sending a copy to a secure cloud provider, as outlined in the cost table picture here. Keep in mind that these prices may fluctuate ever so slightly, since our figures are based upon a six months of usage. These figures are cumulative in nature from year to year. We will eventually see a static charge as our data usage matures to the amount of years council chooses to go with. When we stream our meetings, they're also saved to YouTube. Each YouTube video is also linked through other services like Munich Code, Civic Plus, and others. When council decides upon a retention schedule for audiovisual recordings, it will also translate to all the other mediums through which we utilize our link through. For example, if council chooses six years' retention, we also hold on to that data for six years in each medium and then purge accordingly. Christina?
Just to elaborate a little bit more on the estimated cost for storage, as Brian mentioned, these costs are cumulative and build on the storage needs from each prior year. But when we meet the year of retention, should council select a year, the cost will then become stagnant as we reach that purging year -- excuse me. As we reach the year you select, we'll purge one year's worth of data and add a new year. For example, and in being consistent with the six-year retention period that was selected for the audio-only type of record, staff is recommending a six-year retention period. So using the table on the screen, the first year would cost $57 for the records, second year $114, and so on, until, say, council selects the six-year period, it'll be $342. For years seven, eight, nine, et cetera, it would stay around $342, barring any types of changes to the size of records being kept or cost increases. Finally, as mentioned earlier, the original record retention was set by ordinance. Therefore, should council desire to amend it, it also has to be done through ordinance. I have provided some language in case you're interested in doing that and for your consideration. Thank you, and we're here to answer any questions you might have.
I just have one question. So in the one slide that you had up, you said you had used 84 gigabytes since you started, but the packet says 63. So I'm just wondering what that chart...
63 was for council, and 21 is for the other types of meetings.
I see it.
Any other questions from council? Any questions from anyone here tonight? Then could I get a motion to approve the First Reading of an ordinance to extend the retention period of audiovisual recordings of open meetings from 90 days to six years?
I second.
Scott and Michelle, any other comments from council? Then we'll vote on the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christina, and well done. With that, we'll move on to our reports for tonight. First up is we have a report from the Kendall County Transportation Group. And tonight, joining us is Commissioner Don Durden and Bob Manning, who are the co-chairs of the Kendall County Transportation Group. And they asked if they could give us a presentation on what they went through to produce the report.
Thank you, Mayor Maxton. I am Don Durden, County Commissioner for Precinct Four in Kendall County and the co-chair of the Kendall County Bernie Fair Oaks Transportation Committee, Fair Oaks Ranch Transportation Committee, the committee with the name from a bad place, big name. Bob and I appreciate the opportunity to be here with you today and to officially advise you that we are now through with our job after three years. We have published a report, which I think you all have copies of. It's called "County at a Crossroads." The title of the report suggests that our county and our communities within it face a decision regarding our surface transportation system. The decisions that we make as a county, the decisions that you all make as a city council, will influence not only our mobility, but also influence the quality of life and the economic well-being of all of us into the future. So before I get into those decisions, let me just review a little bit about how we got here. This committee was created initially by a court order back in 2019 of Commissioners' Court. That called for us to -- that court order called for us to recommend three things. First, a short-range program of projects that would take care of the current congestion that we have now. Secondly, a long-range program of improvements, not necessarily projects, but just some improvements that would address travel demand in the future. And finally, a program of policies that's related to the land use and transportation system here in Kendall County. So three things: projects, improvements, and policies. We're pleased to report that all three of those buckets are full. The short-range program includes 19 priority projects as well as 17 secondary projects. This total of 36 projects is a collection of practical, common-sense projects that should improve congestion here in Kendall County. The long-range program includes 12 projects that look a little farther down the road, possibly a little more complex and difficult to implement. And the policy program includes 34 specific recommendations organized into several different categories. They range from preserving the hill country character of this county to better coordination of transportation planning among agencies to more appropriate design criteria being adopted by the different local governments. Our 20-person committee was keenly aware and is keenly aware of the relationship between population growth and transportation, including something called latent demand. And rather than just throw that around there, I want to talk about that for just a minute. The typical growth congestion cycle kind of goes like this. An area grows, the roads get congested because of all the people, and so then some more roads are built or widened. And we probably, when we do that, we add a little extra in there for future growth. That clears up the congestion, enhances mobility, and then the cycle starts all over again. New growth is attracted to the area, at least in part because its roads are no longer congested. And then new people come in, and the roads get congested again, and we do that over and over. Just what happens. So in other words, latent demand is that travel demand that's out there, just lurking out there, waiting for somebody to build roads so they can drive on it. So the question I ask you, and we ask ourselves, is there a way to address current and near-term congestion without attracting excessive growth and stimulating latent travel demand? Well, I'll be clear that there are some things that we can do to influence that latent demand, but we don't know exactly how to control it or prevent it. But the committee is crystal clear about one thing, and that is it wants to avoid stimulating the kind of growth that destroys the character and culture of Kendall County, the kind of growth that jeopardizes our water supplies and our environmental resources. The program of recommended policies in this report is intended to achieve that objective, and we encourage you to consider adopting them after due deliberation, along with other policies that you might adopt that also move us in that direction. So let's go back to the choices I mentioned earlier. The transportation system we have now was created by three different entities. It's a partnership, if you will, consisting of TechDOT, local governments, and the development industry. Ostensibly, these partners work together to efficiently serve the public, that is, the people who live here, the people who travel in, through, and around Kendall County. TechDOT's primary mission is to deliver transportation infrastructure. That's really what they do. But the other two entities, local governments and development industry, they tend to consider transportation either a secondary mission, or, speaking as a county commissioner, we have a lot of other things to do, y'all do too. It's one of several missions that we're responsible for. Now, moving forward, our transportation infrastructure will continue to be delivered by this partnership, and that's reflected in our short- and long-term recommendations. There's things in there for TechDOT, things in there for local governments, and things in there for the development industry. It's important that we understand and acknowledge, though, the unique perspectives of each of these partners as they go about playing their role in this partnership. TechDOT clearly is the specialist. They're focused on mitigating congestion and enhancing mobility, and they do that at the state, regional, and local levels. The development industry, for its part, is focused on offering the optimal combination of products, mostly land and buildings, and they do that at the least cost in order to maximize their profits, and we don't think there's anything the matter with that. Local governments, for their part, are focused on providing governmental and other services to their constituents in the most efficient way possible. So I ask you, which of these three partners do you suppose would be the most likely to help improve and develop our transportation system in a way that best preserves the hill country character and the ambiance that we enjoy here in Kendall County? Which partner offers the best chance to avoid stimulating latent traffic demand? Let's do a little process of elimination. Is it TechDOT? No, I mean, they're great at building roads, but that's what they do. Is it the development industry? Well, sometimes developers do things that do help us suppress demand, but they usually do that only if it enhances their profits. So by a process of elimination, it's local governments that have to lead the charge on this. Up to now, unfortunately, local governments have played an almost de minimis role in transportation planning and delivery. In the past 15 years, TechDOT has spent approximately $150 million in Kendall County to upgrade parts of its highway system in Kendall County. Local governments, all local governments combined, have spent $15 million. So clearly, there's room for local governments to do more. So what are some of the things that local governments can do? Well, one is that they can cooperate more effectively by promulgating policies that influence the planning and the design of the transportation system in all areas of the county, within the city limits, in the ETJs, and there's more than one ETJ in Kendall County, as well as in the unincorporated areas beyond the ETJ. Another obvious way, maybe painful, difficult, is to increase the amount of money we invest in building and upgrading our intersections and our roads. Now, you don't have to do it all. Don't worry, TechDOT's not going to give up road building, and the developers are not going to give up building roads and developing land. But I think that there's a couple of ways that we can maybe change the dynamic a little bit. Maybe we could work more closely with TechDOT and influence their planning and the designs that they offer that affect us here in Kendall County. The development industry, perhaps we could engage them in an expanded dialogue about attracting the kind of development that doesn't create controversy, but the kind of development that enhances the culture and ambiance and the character of Kendall County. And then, once we get through that dialogue, we can maybe incentivize those with the policies that we adopt. While we can and should do those things, if we really want to preserve the hill country character, we need to be the ones who lead that charge, and that's going to involve, again, additional money. I think it goes without saying, but I'll say it anyway, the public is more likely to provide the additional money if the majority of those voters believe that the proposed projects are worthwhile and that they will be managed competently. Now, before I hand this off to Bob... be managed competently. Now, before I hand this off to Bob, there's one more point I want to make. And y'all probably know this already. But anyone who doesn't know it, Fair Oaks Ranch was planned to include a comprehensive trail system that serves the traditional pedestrian modes of walking and biking, as well as micro-mobility and even equine mobility. Some people have suggested that that trail system is one of the benefits or the things that makes Fair Oaks Ranch such a successful development. I share that view. Now, it's clear that a lot of people in Kendall County share that view as well. From our work, three years of work, actually two years with a year off for COVID, we found out that there's a lot of Kendall County citizens who place a high value on pedestrian facilities, such as trails, sidewalks, and multi-use pathways. And it was precisely the passion of that group that prompted us to include a whole chapter on that and to include a vision in the appendix here about what they see for this county in that regard. So I think, you know, regardless of who plans, designs, and builds our pedestrian networks, we need to be involved in that. As you go about seeking voter approval for bonds and tax rates in support of your larger role in transportation planning, I think your credibility and your success will likely be enhanced by the thoughtful and prudent inclusion of pedestrian facilities in those plans. Thank you again for your support. Thank you for your patience in waiting for us to get through with this. At this time, Bob Manning, my co-chair, will offer some additional comments, and then we'll be glad to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Don. Mayor, Council, City Manager, Fair Oaks Ranch residents, it's good to be here at the end of this journey for us. I was asked about my reaction to it by the mayor of Bernie, and I just said, "Well, I've changed my cell phone number, and I'm considering witness protection." Because there are comments in here of how much this needs to be kept alive, that we, the topic isn't finished. This committee has met its goals. So I want to add my thanks to you for asking us, through all the scoping meetings, to start this process, to take a completely different look at congestion and mobility in our community. Conducting such a study without consultants guiding the process, without TechDOT even in the room, and without city staff applying any pressure whatsoever, was a highly unusual approach. But given the widespread rejection of the past several traffic studies, it was a brilliant and necessary approach, but slow. We used a strong consensus threshold for any suggestion to become a formal recommendation. We did not want to see any 51, 49% votes so that we would have a minority report issued in protest. We had set the bar really high. We spent enormous time and effort in public outreach, and in return, received hundreds of project suggestions. We conducted our work with extreme transparency, and we addressed mobility in all of its forms, as Don mentioned: automobiles, school buses, pedestrians, bicycle, safety, trails, et cetera. It may have taken three years and a hundred meetings, but in the end, the committee was able to reach consensus, as Don said, of thirty-six short-range and twelve long-range project recommendations distributed amongst Kendall County, City of Bernie, and City of Fair Oaks Ranch. Also, thirty-four policy recommendations in seven broad categories that can guide future mobility planning in ways that the citizenry can see and participate in and therefore support. And finally, as Don mentioned, the Trails of Multi-Use Infrastructure Plan and Vision. It's a good read, folks. It's very visionary, and it's an upside to future financial decisions and political will commitment to do what you guys have already done so well here and help grow it. It could be a real thing. I want to take a minute to share with you just who made up this committee. We had members appointed by Kendall County, City of Fair Oaks Ranch, and the City of Bernie. Fair Oaks Ranch had two representatives, Bobby Baye and Marcus Garcia. Unfortunately, both had fatal conflicts, couldn't be here, and they were distraught over that, couldn't get out of it. There was a wedding proposal in the works in one of the families and a corporate Christmas party that was a conflict with the other. But they were both familiar with traffic planning, as well as the needs and wishes of this community. They did you well. They spoke eloquently. They were smart. They contributed to the outcome of the report in very positive ways. Other members were appointed by the Economic Development Corporation, Cal Creek Groundwater District, the Hill Country Alliance, the Soil and Water Conservation District, the Chamber of Commerce, Bernie Independent School District, and Comfort Independent School District. Those appointees, twenty, represented multi-generational family names, relative newcomers, transportation professionals, environmental professionals, citizen activists, elected and appointed officials, and a Bernie Independent School District Board member. The fact that such a diverse committee unanimously supported the findings in this report speaks volumes about the hard work that was put into it and the committee's sincere desire to provide useful suggestions. But in the end, our committee's work is a non-binding reflection of the ideas and recommendations of the people who live and work here. It's up to you, as the local governing body, to act on these recommendations, and we sincerely hope you do so. I want to take one quick minute and read a brief statement that one of your two representatives, Marcus Garcia, asked be read. If he were here, he would get up and say this himself, so pretend I'm Marcus for a minute. "Now that the committee has ended, it will be important that we carry the transportation needs for the region collectively. In coordination with the other jurisdictions, we need to tackle the short-term and long-term," parentheses, "most of the Fair Oaks Ranch items are considered long-term, but the needs of the community as determined. While Fair Oaks Ranch won't experience the large amount of growth the region will see, we must continue to hold our seat at the table to ensure that our transportation needs are met and that we maintain Fair Oaks Ranch communities' lifestyle." I was asked a question by the mayor who called me earlier today when I mentioned that we have given a lot of copies of this report, but the report also comes with a QR code on the cover where you can take a picture of it, and it becomes an ebook. It takes you right to the website, and you can open this report up without having to have it in printed copy. So the question was asked, "Are we tracking that?" And I was clueless, all this newfangled technologies over my head. I made the inquiry, and Don helped get the answer. There have been almost eight hundred people who have clicked on this. There's been over five hundred people who have opened this thing and read through it, and there's been twenty-five people who have actually downloaded it so they can have it on their computers or print it out for them on sale forever. So I would encourage you to keep advertising the fact that this report exists, and I would ask that you really pass this QR code around as much as possible to your community for people who just have easy access without having to go to a library or come beg you for your copy or whatever. So, thank you very much. And with that, as Don said, we'd be happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
Questions? Any questions from anyone here tonight?
You guys are too easy.
Yeah, very thorough. Well, thank you both for being here tonight and being a part of our council meeting and the information that you provided. Mentioned three years. So three years is a long time. And if you think back over what we've been through over the past three years, it was also a challenging time to have a committee and bring it through this. So congratulations to both of you of what you've been able to accomplish as co-chairs of this committee. Bob did bring two copies of the report. For anybody that would like a copy, they're outside on the table if you'd like to take one with you. Any else I missed?
No. Thank you guys so much for your support and encouragement.
And y'all are welcome to stay.
One other thing, Brad, this is a big one here with having Dan Banks as a member of this committee.
Thank you much, sir. I appreciate that.
Excuse me, Mayor. Would you be able to repeat what Mr. Darden said?
Sure. Previous member of the committee was Mr. Dan Banks. Dan Banks passed away last week. He was a citizen and resident of Fair Oaks Ranch, and I believe his memorial service is tomorrow here in San Antonio. So Commissioner Darden was just acknowledging the work that Dan Banks put into the committee, thanking him for what he did. So thank you, sir. With that, we'll move on to our next report. We're going to talk about the quarterly town hall meeting that we're setting up, and I believe scheduled now for the 24th of January.
Sir. So hopefully, this is a good transition from that presentation to what council may or may not want to cover. We've talked loosely over the last month about hosting a town hall regarding transportation. We have been able to confirm January 24th as the date. It'll be conducted at the United Methodist Church here in Fair Oaks Ranch, starting at 6:30, and we will push out narrative and public service announcements to advertise participation. One of the items that has been solidified is TechDOT will participate in a conversation about the upcoming bridge project spanning Sibyllo Creek at FM 3351. And the purpose of me updating you tonight is not only to solidify the date and to let you know that TechDOT is there, but to also seek some insight and feedback. I know that there's some desire to have several transportation topics covered at this town hall meeting. You know, I'd like some insight on that, whether it's tonight or email me at your convenience. But what other topics would we like to include on this transportation town hall meeting? And then really, we can start talking about format, breakout sessions, whatever the council desires to do. So I'll turn it over to y'all and look forward to hearing what your thoughts are.
Did we extend the invite and/or collaborate with FORHA on specifically inviting them and members to this?
No, ma'am. I've had one informal meeting and let FORHA folks know that we were planning a town hall meeting. They've also, subsequent to that, let me know that they were planning a town hall meeting, but that theirs was just going to be for citizens, not including TechDOT. So it'd be really nice if we could coordinate efforts and have one town hall meeting, but I don't have any control over what FORHA wants to do, and TechDOT has confirmed to come to our meeting. I don't know if FORHA's even reached out to TechDOT. You're welcome.
Something that everybody would be interested in, combining the meetings and including FORHA as part of the...
I would prefer we host the meeting, and the same people that FORHA would invite would be invited to ours. They have questions on FORHA, they could ask them there, but I think we host it. I don't want dueling town halls where different information is shared at different ones and we're chasing answers from different town halls. I'd prefer just one sitting one.
I agree with Laura. I think that everybody at Fair Oaks Ranch is more inclusive than just FORHA membership. And so I think it would be the community's time to have one meeting. And I also agree with the single-point-of-truth concept that Laura mentioned, that everybody's hearing the same information.
Certainly start working on that with FORHA.
The only thing I was going to add, and I'll email you the topics I want. I know I definitely want us to cover highlights of our transportation plan already. So one, just so that our residents know what's already in our plan, and definitely have a breakout session in case people want to give input for any updates to it at a minimum. Because I think a lot of people probably don't realize, you know, our plan and what our collective roads are and what our different road structures are and what it means.
And I'll follow up with council with emails just as I start framing this agenda, and I'm going to leave this as a standing item and start bringing you draft agendas to look at so that you can massage that along the way.
I kind of visualized what Laura was bringing up, and I like the idea of the different topics and not just focusing on the TechDOT portion of it. I think when we first started talking about this, it was more of a broader, the transportation network and how it influences our city. And then, I don't know, process-wise, I know that we want council to be upfront as part of this. And I was trying to think the best way to engage with residents and open up for questions. And, you know, we may have a way to start it off, maybe provide some information. If it's done by council members, or if it's expertise information is needed, maybe kicked off by staff. And then, open up for questions. And then I like the idea of the breakout sessions, maybe as we, allowing people to move to and ask direct questions with individuals. I think we'll get more interaction that way than we would maybe in an open town hall format. Just my comments.
What about, would council be interested, don't worry about who's going to present it, whether it's council or staff, but having some highlights of what we know what's going on in the region, even some development around us and how that may or may not impact our infrastructure system? Would that be important to at least put out on the table?
I imagine there'll be questions on I-10, on Buc-E's. I mean, they're going to ask these questions, right? You know, they're going to ask what's going on around us. I know they're going to ask that. I'm interested in some of those.
Okay, great. Any other thoughts? Just please share them with myself or Grant. We're going to start structuring this. And again, this will be a standing item, maybe even make it a workshop item so that y'all have some opportunity to actually wordsmith if you need to.
We'll have two more council meetings prior to the town hall meeting, so we'll have time to fine-tune this.
And I'll be reaching out to you individually just with briefs and seeking input.
Any questions from anybody else here tonight?
Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks, Tobin. And you're back up with the report on the Civic Center?
Yes, sir. Just real quickly, I wanted to follow up. The last time we talked, I mentioned that I was going to try and bring back an update in November. It's December 1st, so I'm a day late. But I've met with a few, Grant and I, with a few outside third parties that are involved in the construction industry. Got a better understanding, at least personally, of what's going on market-wise, economy-wise, where prices are falling, where prices are increasing, logistics, bottlenecks, things of that nature. Also, better ideas of maybe how to shape and frame on the front end with some better design, more developed design and spec books that will help us understand which delivery method to utilize. So we are working on it. I anticipate coming back in January with some information on design services for council to consider so that we can start developing that spec book and the actual functionality of whatever space that y'all decide you want to do. And then we can use that information to go either with construction manager at risk or design bid build at that point. But we need to get some fully developed plans, or at least a little bit farther along. So we are going to need to continue to spend a little design money. If you recall, we had a design contract. We haven't exhausted all of those monies yet because we went with the CMR project, and then we stopped on the Civic Center. But if that works for council, I'll come back in January with some information about design services.
Sounds good. Questions?
I have one question. Just remind me, what level of design do we have now?
With the Civic Center, we got about 20, 25%.
Okay. So we have like a 20, 25% design?
It was more conceptual of functional space. We didn't get into the spec books of, you know, trusses, windows, trimmings, brick, facades, any of that.
Okay. I was going to ask, what's a spec book? But, okay, that sounds...
It's just eight, nine hundred pages of everything that's involved in to build a project. But if you have a spec book that, maybe there's ten different types of windows that would work. And then as we value engineering to it, we can select which ones we can afford. And then as we value engineering to it, we can select which ones we can afford that work with the functionality of the space. It's more along the lines of an enhanced construction manager at risk process.
Greg, I have a quick...
Go ahead.
Tobin, what level of confidence do you feel like you need in the design in order to be able to start to look at a possible request for increase in the grant from MDD?
Not for several months. I mean, we have money's program right now to start moving forward with architectural services, and I think that'll, a couple of months after that, we'll be able to come to the council and say, "Look, we think that the opinion of probable cost is X, and we probably should go back to the MDD and amend that." I can't give you a guaranteed date, Councilman Elizondo, but I'm hoping in a few months.
I was just kind of, you know, trying to put, you know, marker without a date about the level of confidence we had to have in the design to see if we can put together, you know, a grant request proposal. And I understood your answer. I think you did answer my question, so...
And also, you know, I want to generate as high confidence levels as we can, but as you've seen with some of the presentations we've had recently, contingencies range from 55% to 80%. So that's, that's the environment we're working in when we're trying to come up with estimated construction costs.
Thanks.
Yes, sir. January, sound good, at least for the next update?
That's the soonest you can come, then January's it.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Questions from anyone here tonight? All right. We'll move on to announcements, question announcements. And do we want to start off with Chief, or...
I received a call from Councilman Parker, but some emails from everybody, but wanting just a quick update on what's going on with crime and different activities in our city. So Mayor, if it's all right with the council, I'd like to yield my time to Chief to just give a brief update on those types of matters.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Council, yes, Tobin asked me to just brief y'all on some of the things that have been going on lately. Just some high-level numbers here. I had Lacy scrambling to kind of pull some of this together. We've had a little bit of an uptick in burglaries this year, burglaries of vehicles and stolen vehicles. Most recently, I think, believe it was three weeks ago, we had five vehicles and a trailer stolen in one night. Every single burglary that we've had this year has been easy for the burglars, which is why you see Casey putting out some of the hide your stuff, lock your car, or trying to remind residents, help themselves out, make sure you take your valuables out of the car, make sure you lock your car, don't leave your keys in your car, don't leave your keys for your other car in your other car. And most importantly, what we're finding in almost every single one of these instances is do not leave your weapons in the car. So we've recovered a lot of the stuff from the burglaries, a lot of the personal items. I believe all vehicles have been recovered so far, but we have not recovered any of the weapons that have been stolen, which is concerning. So outside of that, most of the year has been pretty normal until about May. We've seen a little bit of uptick on those opportunity crimes. Outside that, everything seems to be pretty normal, knock on wood. We are down in our violent crime section, but the nuisance crimes, criminal mischiefs, things like that, we are seeing a little bit of those. We're thinking they're our typical students on break, more likely, but we're still looking at some of those, so. We want to get clarification. I think Tobin was telling me that there's some chatter out there on social media with some misinformation there. But yes, we do have burglaries. Just remind people, lock your cars, take your keys out, take your valuables out. And if you see something, give us a call. Please don't call your neighbor. Please don't tell your neighbor two days from then. Call us right then. We have got officers on duty. We've increased our night patrols. There's been several days where me and Lieutenant and some of the CID's have come in at 3:00 in the morning to increase patrols. Help us out. Make sure you talk to your neighbors. Call us if you see anything.
Thanks, Chief. And real quick, council, the Chief just mentioned it, but I wanted to commend the Chief and Lieutenant for some of their proactive measures. We've all read and seen what's going on in the region over the last couple of weeks and month, and both are highest ranking officials have come in voluntarily over the past few weeks, running extra shifts, doing proactive measures to, at the right times of the day to see if we can stop some of this. So really, really proud of what they're doing. That's all I had, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Any other announcements from council?
Wanted to remind everybody that the FORHA is hosting the Santa in the Park with music, the Tootie Pie Food Truck Games and Crafts for the kiddos, photo ops of a Santa from 2:00 to 4:00 on Sunday in Vestal.
Anybody else? I had two announcements for tonight. First is our Fair Oaks Ranch Police Department has been conducting a toy drive. It's been going on now for a couple of weeks, but it will end on the 16th of December, and they're taking unwrapped donated toys for ages 0 to 16. And I believe you have boxes set up in both elementary schools, CBS, Sibyllo Creek Community Church, Parker's Ice Cream, Spotted Deer, at the Country Club, and here in the PD lobby, and also over at City Hall.
We have added some additional boxes. We added one at, I don't remember, it's the John Deere off the highway, right next to Strutti's. And the City Hall box, due to the reconstruction, has been moved to the outside of the police building here, so if anybody wants to drop off toys after hours, they can do so.
Right. Thank you, Chief. And the second announcement I have is on the, our next council meeting will be on the 15th of December. At that council meeting, we are going to recognize the retirement of Jim Earl. He's been our building official here at the City of Fair Oaks Ranch for the past 19 years. So it'll be a special meeting with that opportunity to recognize all that Jim Earl has done for us as part of the city and his efforts over 19 years. And that's all I had, is does any council member have any agenda items that they would like placed on a future council agenda? Okay. We will convene into executive session tonight pursuant to Section 551.101 of the Open Meetings Act. The Texas Government Code of Quorum of the Governor and Body hereby convenes in the closed session. We'll do this under Section 551.072, deliberation regarding real property, and the City Council will meet in closed session to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property that may be considered for future Tech Dot improvements to FM 3351. Christine, I have the time now, is 7:25, and we are going into executive session.